Underway. I'll do the agenda with additional verbal report for my CEO on the Avenue Parking, Avenue Restaurant Parking area. Move. Second, all those in favor? So we'll actually start with that one.
Oh, sure. So we had a look at the parking situation up and around Avenue Restaurants and the other commercial establishments up there. And we agreed with their concerns that it did appear to be mostly hospital employee parking. And we've put in more signage to restrict parking to two hours in specific areas. So an additional, I'd say thirteen spots have been added. So there's two hour parking controls there. And that now is being enforced. The other issue related to the angle parking that was unclear on the one side of the Avenue Restaurants will be addressed during our painting program sometime this summer.
Thanks for that report.
And so they were happy with that. We felt those thirteen spaces would make the difference to that they had a level of satisfaction with that solution, the owners of the Avenue.
Patty?
Just that I was in there on Saturday and the owners were thrilled. I'm very, very pleased. And I actually had to park up there in order to get into the restaurant.
Good. All right. Good stuff. Okay, so move on with staff reports. The first one is the fourth quarter financial statement. For receipt.
Move.
Second.
And receipt, all those in favor? Questions carried. Any questions for the Director comments?
I just had a quick one on the outstanding taxes. Has this pretty well been resolved? A large amount to be outstanding? Is most of that coming in?
No.
No?
I don't think any of them have paid.
Essentially, their next deadline will be September for the most.
September thirtieth. Yeah, the last Monday is September, which happens to be September thirtieth this year, is the property tax sale date of mine.
What's the interest rate on that?
Six percent.
Is that by legislation or by bylaw?
It's by provincial legislation.
Still not a bad investment.
In the financial plan, you'll notice that I bumped the interest on delinquent taxes and interest on arrears this year because of the balances outstanding. So I bumped them each by $5,000. So I'm counting on a little more revenue from those people this year. That helps balance the plan.
All right. Any further on that? Other than the fourth quarter report, seeing none, we'll move on to the page thirteen. Water and sewer parcel tax bylaws and recommendations that will be forwarded to or bylaws will be forwarded to council for first time in good reason.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion on those? Equalization essentially of the current thirty dollar for water, sixty for sewer, and we're going to change during the proposed forty-five for each. Still the same total as nine.
I noticed, Donald, that you said our parcel taxes are quite modest compared to other communities. That's generally true for province?
Yes.
Good for our taxpayers.
It is, but the total revenues we get per household are fairly comparable to other municipalities. So if we charge a lower parcel tax, we have a relatively higher, we have a slightly higher user fee, right? Because the 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 householder typically pays both. So if our parcel tax is a little lower, then the user fee is a little higher.
All right. Any further on those? All those in favor? Questions carried. That'll be brought forward to council eventually. On the page nineteen, we have a brief report and a recommendation that council approved the replacement of pedestrian activity weekends at the proposed Comox Ellis Crosswalk and at the crosswalk fronting of the Stair of Senior Center in Oxford.
I'll move that.
Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Just a question, Shelley. Has it ever been raised recently for having a similar thing by Cape Lassell School?
The New Brooklyn, as they call it?
The New Brooklyn.
We had that installed in 2012 at the Gentry and Torrance. Yeah, that was installed in 2012, part of our project.
Thank you.
All right. Anything further? Seeing none, all those in favor? Questions carried. Page twenty-one, council remuneration for 2013 report for receipt.
Who received?
Second.
Receipt, now all those in favor? Questions carried? Questions, comments?
That's a that's a done deal for us.
That's established by policy.
Of course.
That's the formula we apply starting in 2006.
Why, were you thinking we should get more? We should talk about it.
You can roll the mayor back if you want.
The thought had crossed my mind.
Our Director Finance?
Your worship, it's actually established by bylaw. The remuneration bylaw says.
That's what I meant. All right. Moving on then, we'll look at the finding reports on the new zone for our four point one, single family, three hundred victims per single person. Motion to receive this for permission.
Move.
Second.
Receipt, then, all those in favor? Questions carried. And our planner is here, of course. Any questions or comments?
You said one, just some, oh, was it my turn?
Just go ahead.
Clarification. If someone wanted to create a new subdivision using this smaller lot size, could you do an entire subdivision this way?
Yes.
Okay, because you're really talking about infill and a lot of those things, but you could actually use this as a.
You could use it, but I mean, it's also very applicable to greenfield areas.
Yes.
It really reduces the infrastructure and our maintenance costs.
Okay.
Patty and then Tom.
I'm just curious on the rationale why a bed and breakfast is not allowed by the secondary suite. To me, they're they're similar and almost have maybe is less on the side of the neighborhood.
BMB primarily comes down to, I think, a little bit in terms of neighborhood perception and parking, parking being a big issue. And as we start shrinking these franchises, we're very cognizant of rationalizing the impact on the neighborhood to mitigate it. So that was just a judgment call in terms of that having in those neighborhoods, also having somebody that advertising for BMB would not be acceptable. That's something easily we can put back into the zone. That's what council wishes.
Road widths, we don't, they're not addressed in this bylaw, right?
No.
And is there a reason why we don't?
We have that slated to be addressed in the new subdivision bylaw. So that road width will be in our subdivision bylaw in terms of dedication asphalt construction widths. Right now, in advance of the new subdivision bylaw, we're dealing with the templates, sort of the prototype on sixteen fifty-one McDonald. And we're anticipating, that's where we did the six meters asphalt proposal and did parking bays, I believe, dedicated parking bays of two point seven. We are quite confident that we can improve on that further in terms of working with the Northeast Comox Stormwater Management Study. We can then start to bring in Boulevard Treatments and groundwater recharge.
So in the new subdivision, so it doesn't have to be addressed in the small lot subdivision or the smaller zoning bylaw? But it will be addressed in the subdivision bylaws so to accommodate small infill subdivisions and that where.
Yes. Yeah, the additional one is to address areas of town where we have the historic smaller roads.
Yeah.
And exactly what we're doing in those areas.
Good. Thank you.
Anything further? Seeing none, thank you for that report. All right, so at page thirty-three and subsequently have the second draft of the 2013-2017 financial plan for receipt. And motion to receive that and then you like discussion.
Who worship?
All in favor? Questions carried? All right, so who would like to start with comments, questions? So thank you. Stop right at four. David, come to that.
I've just got a question of the, you know, with regards to this hundred thousand dollars for paving down in the Marina. And we're in the midst of trying to redesign down in the Marina and the rest of it. It seems that we're going to be draining the Marina Reserve Fund at a hundred thousand dollars to do this paving project. And where's that going to leave us if we finally get some plans that we're happy with on on the Marina Boardwalk or whatever you want to call it? Who wants to respond to that?
Probably a CIO and perhaps our engineer in terms of priority that way.
Was that in 2013?
Yes.
Your worship. Go ahead.
If you turn to the Marina budget, which is page sixty-four of the agenda, you'll see that we make an annual contribution to the Marina Reserve, but starting 2013 and escalating into future years, there's going to be a contribution to the water, to a new waterfront development, redevelopment reserve. So if we have to do something kind of on the edge of the Marina, that'll be funded from that rather than the Marina Capital Reserve per se.
Oh, okay, so you're talking two different.
So there really are two different reserves, yeah.
Oh, okay.
That makes sense.
So, all right, so now that leads me back to the Marina Reserve Fund has been set up to to replace fingers and floats and stuff like that. Is it wise to use the Marina Reserve Fund for the parking lot?
We dipped into the Marina Reserve Fund twice so far in recent years. Once was, I think about five or six years ago, to pay off the remainder of the debt because it was actually, we'd actually taken out a lease on the facility to finance the reconstruction somewhere around nineteen ninety-eight or nineteen ninety-nine. And so we used the Marina Reserve to pay off that. Subsequently, we used it to rebuild the boat launch. Is it wise? I, all I can say is that I'm looking for ways to balance the financial plan, and it's certainly there. It's an opportunity. The Marina users certainly use that parking lot.
Okay, so can anybody comment on the state of the Marina itself? Like, are we going to, you know, are we robbing Peter to pay Paul? Are we going to use the Marina Reserve Fund to do the parking lot? And that's going to leave us short in future years to do work that's thoroughly needed on the floats.
Your worship, there's a survey planned this year of the Marina where we get someone in to evaluate the the state of the fingers, the floats, the pylons, the everything. So there's a comprehensive Marina survey in the capital plan, I believe.
How much is in reserve right now?
The financial statements we just received on page eleven of the agenda, at December thirty-first, there was a hundred and eleven thousand in Marina Reserve.
So we're draining it right now?
Yes.
But then also.
We're also going to put some money in.
Twenty and fifty-five thousand a year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, CEO, would you like to add?
Just going to mention what Don mentioned about the survey and the fact that we have a fairly comprehensive, ongoing maintenance program to maintain the floats. We'll have a better understanding of the condition assessment of the pilings, which perhaps may be the biggest thing, given the corrosive nature of salt water. But generally, we're fairly confident it's in good shape right now.
Maybe not directly related to the Marina Reserve, but to the Marina itself is that we raised the rates last year for for those people there, Marina residents. And I was pleased to see in the first draft that they were going to increase the hours for the attendant at the Marina. And I was pleased, basically, because there were some people that were unhappy that the rates were raised and what did they have to show for it, so to speak. So now we can say that the that those hours will be increased and the parking lot is going to be attended to from Marina Reserve. Is there any anything else that, any more bang for their buck, so to speak, with the raised rates? I think that's a fair question.
I guess the HST will be disappearing for the ship. The rate increase won't be as high.
Any further, Dad?
I get the privilege of keeping the boat in the fabulous facility.
With the lowest rates on Vancouver. What more can we say?
Okay. Just one thing. So this this plan includes a two point seven percent increase in taxes, which I think is what we had all tried to target for. When I look at our list of the things that we're, that we changed or that staff changed here on our behalf, is this going to leave us in any kind of, any kind of issues in the future coming up? Or it seems to me that we've got it set up fairly well with our with our infrastructure renewal programs that we're doing, and we're setting ourselves up fairly well for the future. We haven't sort of robbed Peter that we're going to have to pay back sometime in the future here. It doesn't appear to. I'm just one, I just wanted to have staff's comments on that.
We have, I believe we have a fairly, continue to have a fairly aggressive capital plan in terms of infrastructure renewal. If you look towards the outer years, I think 2017, from a staff perspective right now, we feel we're a bit light on the capital works. And that is something that may change over the next few years. But for 2013 through 2016, we still have a lot of work that we're proposing to do in this plan. And it's consistent with the strategic priorities that council has put forward in terms of infrastructure renewal and asset management.
And if we get our gas tax money able to be able to spend on some of those, some of those kinds of issues in the future, it seems like that'll probably change. That will help us out as we get into those years, will it?
That will help. And there are some projects that we've identified in here that that we're assuming will be funded partially through infrastructure grants and other sources.
Okay.
So that, there could very well be changes related to those as well.
And of course, we're all anxiously to see what the federal government does in terms of its renewal of the infrastructure program. The gas tax, we know, will be there for a little while yet. But the other, what was called Building Canada Fund is slated to expire in twenty fourteen and again in twenty fourteen. So there's been lots of lobbying, and I guess we're just waiting to see how the fiscal picture sorts itself out at the federal level. Not to mention the provincial level.
But there's been quite a push in Ottawa, or to Ottawa, to make sure that they continue with the structure.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Anytime there's a big water main break in a place like Montreal, someone will be.
From from Australia.
All right, any further on the budget? Patty?
Yeah, I think Steph has done some really great things here. I really thought putting that proposed tradesperson to a summer student was very clever. I'm just wondering if we could have some conversation about HST impact, that change, and also about, this will be our first year that we'll have to buy carbon offsets?
In fact, we accrued the carbon offsets in 2012, so we budgeted for them last year. I'm just still working on the computation of that. And I've got to come back to you within the next few weeks with the practical whereas of how how we actually buy those offsets. So we'll have some memos coming to you probably within the next month to month and a half because we've got to lock that in by the end of May. So, yeah, this is, this will actually be, 2013 will be the second year of offsets we'll be budgeting for.
Physically, we buy them.
Yeah, physically, we'll buy them this year, but we'll be buying them for last year, right? We'll go through a year, we'll compute the greenhouse gases, then we'll calculate how much we have to offset and and buy accordingly. So it'll be an accrual I'll make from an accounting point of view at year end. But then sometime before the the end of May, we've got to make the purchase.
And HST?
I don't see any major change in HST. You get it one way or another. We we are attempting to buy as much material things as we can before HST expires and then put off consulting services and the like if we can till after. But in some cases, we've got to get projects up to tender, so we've carried on with our engineering regardless. The thing is that there are some things that are exempt from PSD, mostly services afterwards, so. And we only get a partial rebate of the provincial share of the HST, right? We get five point two five sevenths.
And any of our fees, we're not planning to manually change?
Generally speaking, our fees don't have HST on them. The exception, I guess, is the Marina and some of what goes on at the Red Center, right? And so there'll be a bit of a break for for some of the users because there'll be seven percent added, or five percent added instead as well. But in terms of our net revenue, there's no change.
Tom?
Don, you remember how much money you budgeted for the carbon offsets per ton?
I used twenty-five dollars a ton. I based it on the 2011 calculation that we had, and it's kind of spread through the departments. So for instance, if we turn to fleet operations, which is page fifty-three of the agenda, you'll see that I budgeted in 2012, 2014, and a hundred and six thousand. So once I get my calculations done, figure out who we're actually buying from, we may need to change that in future years.
Yeah, because the regional district had budgeted exactly the same thing, twenty-five dollars a ton for carbon offsets, when in fact, because of the carbon offset market right now, you can buy those carbon offsets for anywhere from a dollar to ten dollars a ton. So we're we're putting away too much money for carbon offsets.
It really depends on what council wants to achieve because.
I don't want to spend twenty-five dollars a ton, I can spend a dollar.
Well, I guess the question is, is it, what are you getting for your dollar? And and the and the carbon offset world gets very complicated very fast because verification, certification, registration, making sure that people aren't double counting, double selling.
Well, one of these was, I know, I don't think it was the Pacific Carbon Trust that was a dollar a ton, but it's still less than ten dollars a ton.
Pacific Carbon Trust is twenty-five a ton. There's another one, there's another Canadian fund based in Quebec that's thirty dollars a ton. I've seen some American ones in the ten, twelve U.S. ton range that have certification on them.
Okay.
So really, it just, when it comes back to you, there's going to be some some options available to you. And it really comes down to what does council want to achieve? If your object is to to minimize the cost, yeah, you can do that. But but then the question is, are we really carbon neutral?
So that, now, discussion will be had, specifically, too, before we spend any of the money.
Yes.
And one other question. We were overbuilt for water last year to the tune of about sixty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Is that factored into this budget?
It's not factored into the the budget because we received the credit in December. But if you turn to the water budget, which is, I guess.
Page sixty-eight?
Page sixty-eight, yeah. And bulk water purchases kind of straddles page sixty-eight and sixty-nine. So when all is said and done, after the adjustments made for 2012, and also subtracting out the water, we buy, or we buy, we use ourselves in parks and buildings and such, our actual use was two million, three hundred forty-five thousand cubic meters. And so I've used that as the starting point and assumed two point four million this year in terms of our water, our water use for 2013.
So why do we continue to spend money on water meters when our water consumption continues to go up? Just put that out there. And especially when, you know, if they start relaxing the rules on what we can do with gas tax money, you know, we continue to spend twenty-five thousand. Is that what we have in here, twenty-five thousand a year?
In the next couple of years, a couple of years.
Well, there's lots of, I guess, evidence that the water meters that have been installed have been providing good information for the town and for homeowners, whether they're paying metering or not. And certainly, we've discovered with that metering system, lots of leaks or problems with people's connections. So based on the various letters that I've seen going back and forth, there's been lots of good, good comes on that. And more analysis of what water uses about. Any event, that's one aspect of it. Yes?
Sorry, I just, it wasn't clear where that sixty-one thousand dollars went from.
So the actual, 2012, actual, one million, four twenty-three, one thirty-eight?
Yes.
Okay, includes part of the sixty thousand, but the sixty thousand actually goes back three years. So some of the credit was applied to 2012, some to 2011, some to 2010, and so on.
But we got the check.
We got the check, yeah. And the actual one million, four twenty-three is what we actually had as a 2012 expense after the adjustment.
One thing we have to discuss with respect to cultural budget is allocation. Apparently, in the budget, there's fifteen thousand set to be allocated. The Sid Williams Theater has not been given a specific allocation at this point. Last year, may recall, we increased it to fifteen thousand from twelve and a half. And of course, we had a submission from their organization a few weeks ago looking for, I think, twenty-five thousand. So I'm on page sixty-five, sorry. And so it's up to council to provide direction to staff with respect to the Sid Williams Theater and allocation of that grant, assuming that you wish to continue doing so. So we probably need a motion to whatever effect.
So I wouldn't want to see us change our, or increase our taxes if we had to. So if somebody wanted to bump that up, I think they have to find it within this plan to.
Sure.
To figure out how to do that. You know, I think staff's done a good job of getting it where it is. When I heard the Sids, you know, they always, they always want more, and we did just bump it up to fifteen. So I think if somebody does want to raise that, they've got to find it somewhere within what we're doing here.
I think the Sid was also looking for some certainty. Perhaps we could allocate for the next two years, if we have this council, and that may be a commitment there. But beyond that, I think it'll be up to a subsequent council.
Well, would it? I don't know if this is even possible or not, but it it seems to me to make sense that they should be going to the regional district and this should be a whole regional.
And they have.
But they shouldn't have to go around to every council with their hat in their hand every time.
Well, until there's an actual regional function to cover this, then that's what they're left with.
Yeah, because it seems like a backwards way of doing it, the way it's going on. I sympathize with them on that.
Yeah, for sure. Berlin and Patty?
Thank you. So grants to be allocated by council. If we did want to increase the Sid to, say, twenty thousand, could we take it, take five thousand from that?
No, we have to allocate, like that, there's nothing allocated in the budget at the moment to the Sid. So that fifteen thousand is presumably what we would be at a certain point looking at giving to the Sid. Beyond that, we have to find. Beyond that, we have to find it somewhere else. Patty, you're next.
Well, when I read the Nautical Days budget and we have $20,000 for a contractor to do the program with incredible expertise, I would hope that perhaps she could manage the operations with perhaps a little less and save us some money. So there might be an opportunity to reduce the Nautical Days budget, not the contract services, but the budget, and then shift it over to SIDS?
Possible. I mean, that, we've seen the last number of years, nautical leaves, particularly with the firework expense is a significant one, and sponsorship has been difficult to come by. So I'm not sure we can do it for this year.
Well, just on that tech though, the fact that we do have a paid person in this position now, the expectation is that we will get more sponsorship.
Well, hopefully.
Yes.
Well, and certainly they'll meet the goal on that. There's also a big airshow this year, which will take a lot of sponsorship money, so as a business person, I know, ask at almost every place.
Exactly.
So hopefully, it'll work better, yes.
Well, I mean, it would be, you know, it would be a lot easier thing to do, to wait a year and see how the Nautical Days goes before we take it out now and then find out it doesn't work, so...
Now, last year was a transition year for the Nautical Leaves organization, and now we're moving into a new model, which hopefully will provide some of those benefits on the bottom line. So anything further on that? We kind of, we need a motion to deal with the SIT? Anyone wish to make one?
Well, I just have a question of staff before we make a motion. I mean, I could probably go through this and find $15,000. I mean, staff went through and found about $600,000 in two weeks.
Well, we deferred some things like policing.
You know, when you look at things that have been budgeted every year at $1,500 when the actual is only $1,000, but we continue to carry over that 17, 50, you know? I think if we go through this budget, and I don't want to do it today, I think if staff went through it and said, you know, like, how come our, in our building department, for instance, that our, you know, we're down to one building inspector, but our training, the amount of money we have in training that we have never spent over the last few years continues to be at the same level? Well, you know, you could find $1,000 or $500 here, $500 there, and next thing you know, we might have $15,000 to get to the SIT without...
We do have $15,000 in the budget to allocate to the SIT, so we're looking...
Oh, I thought you said that...
We're looking for a...
Just for clarification, the previous direction of council several years back was to provide funding to the Sid Williams Theater at a specific amount for a certain number of years. What we've done in providing you with this draft plan is, on the bottom of the cultural services, we've continued that $15,000 without any direction from council, just assuming that there would be an interest in at least carrying that much forward, but we haven't allocated it. So the simplest approach is just to move it up along to the Sid Williams Theater with a motion or some direction from council in terms of the amount that you'd like to see, if it's 15, if it's greater...
Oh, I see, yeah, straight there.
Yeah, so it's, it doesn't require an increase if you want to stick with 15, and it requires an increase if you want to go greater than $15,000. That's tricky on that.
That's why we kind of... Go ahead, Ben.
I'd make a motion that we give the Sid Williams $20,000.
And I second that. Discussion, Patty, please.
And just, a lot of my rationale just rests in that it is the Valley Theater. The town of Comox surely doesn't want to have to build their own theater. We have this great asset that we utilize 365 days of the year and sell it to the community pretty much. And yeah, when I see we're doing $40,000 for Nautical Days, which I love Nautical Days, but it's three days of it a year, I think $20,000 to the SIT is one of the...
Great, so where were they talking?
Yes, and I seconded the motion too, because I think that the SIT is doing an excellent job, and it is in very tight circumstances. I think the presentation was very good. I know they would have preferred $25,000, but I think the $20,000 does reflect, as Council Fletcher says, that we do have a first-rate theater in our community that's open to all of us. And so I would like to see that we put the $20,000 in and had it a certainty of up to 2017, we'd have it in the budget.
Okay, so that would be, I would say, a friendly amendment to say that you're saying $20,000...
Per each year.
For each to the five years.
Yes, for the plan.
Thank you. Should verify that at the beginning.
So does that mean we're going to increase our budget over and above the 2.7% by 5,000? Or can we ask staff to try and find that $5,000 within this budget somewhere, just by reallocating it from training and...
Imagine, and find it somewhere.
If that's the direction council wants to give us, that's what we'll do.
And just one other thing, and it's sort of off topic, but it's on topic, and we're looking to save money. We spend a horrendous amount of money on telephone systems. I just, and I've talked about this before, have we ever audited what we're doing to find out if we could go to... You see, Shaw can now supply business services, whereas before you could, with business services, you could only go to Telus, and Telus' rates were absolutely crazy. And, you know, I know I've done this in my own business, and by looking at alternate providers, you can get a cheaper price, and you can use that against Telus and have them reduce their...
We did look into it when you raised it, and we do, it was last year, and we were just tied into a contract that still has, I think, four years left on it.
Don?
We, in fact, switched the rec center last year over to Shaw because they had six months left in their contract. And so after budget season last year, we looked into that and switched them. And we're now down to three years left on our contract with Telus on Town Hall. Town Hall's a little tricky because there are PRI lines involved. He uses digital connections, and I'm not sure if Shaw can provide those.
Yeah, but we've got, we've got our engineering department, we've got, you know, we've got, I mean, I look in here and I think, oh, natural. And we're, you know, we could own a telephone company.
And some of that telephone is handheld devices, right? That it's not all landlines, right?
Well, might be an idea to phone up Telus and say, if they don't start coming to the party early, that they stand no chance of renewing this, because this is what's happening in the telecommunications industry.
Right?
Yeah, so I don't really have any problem with giving the SIT $20,000 a year, but I do think that we should find it within our plan, and of course, our motion doesn't say that. So I would think that an amendment that says it's contingent on staff finding that five, well, it's actually $25,000 over a five-year period rather than 5,000, right? Because you've got to do 5,000 a year for...
You just reallocate it.
Right, so if we could make a friendly amendment to say contingent on staff finding that...
Do you need that as a motion, chief?
Or you want that as a motion, or...
I think I heard it long ago.
Well, it's just that it wasn't our motion, right? So I want it to be...
We could fine it a little bit.
Yeah. On our own system.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor, $20,000 to be allocated to Sid Williams Theater in the cultural budget. So we're moving second any further discussion. So we've got all the paper, motion's carried.
So we'll hear back on that, Ken, staff?
It'll be in the next, in final draft of the budget, I guess, as we approve, we have to approve the budget by law. Yes?
Just to reinforce my point, you know, when, you know, Don said that we changed service providers at the rec center. Well, our actual phone bill at the rec center in 2011 was $10,073. Next year, we're budgeting $6,000. There's $4,000 a year, but I mean, I know this is on live streaming, did it? Tell us.
Who's providing that stream, or who was? Well, contracts are contracts, and I guess as we can review and renew them, if we will.
Well, but you know, oftentimes, if, you know, if they know they're caught like that, they'll, they'll talk to you long before the contract expires, if they know they're going to lose it forever. I mean, you know, look at there, they're losing $6,000 a year revenue over to the, whatever service provider we went to.
Well, remember, they got the message there.
So, staff, you need somebody for her and a gushi, you should just call.
Yeah, phone you.
Phone you.
Anything further? Yes?
Just on the capital side, 2015, I'm just wondering, the sidewalk, where you're at K-74, the sidewalk designated by Comox Avenue Peter Stewart, it's dependent on the development route? Do we foresee that happening?
That's the, I know which one we're talking about. There's been some, there's been some talk about that development proceeding, but like anything these days in the real estate market, it's, as you gave us investment, we'll go ahead.
I've met with an interested party who's looking at inquiring or acquiring that project. I would say right now, the potential is better than 50% that it will happen.
But it might not happen in 2013 or 2014.
If we put the sidewalk into a rec, that they can fix it.
But we wouldn't do the sidewalk, right, unless development did it?
What's proposed in the budget is the section of sidewalk from Comox Key to the start of the Ample Side development, then they would do the rest, right, around their frontage. That's why it's in conjunction with theirs, because there's no point us putting ours in until they get theirs as well.
And we have the sidewalk in order.
Anything further on capital or operational? So CAO, will this then, what happens next, assuming there's no further changes, where do we go in terms of needs and that was? I know we have filled the 15th for May, but in terms of approving the budget, can we do it soon?
We will have to wait for the school tax numbers to come in, correct?
We can approve the financial plan earlier. The tax rates can't be set until we know what's in the, what's in the final tax rule, and that doesn't happen until the person who gave it.
Okay. And so if we bring forward a revised version timing, the increases for the Sid Williams Theater internally, and if we get a motion to approve the financial plan, that gives staff the ability to proceed with projects.
Yeah, I recall that last year, we determined that in many respects, it's better to vote early with it rather than later.
Yes. We've got Comox Ellis Crosswalk Project is under tender, there's others that are under tender right now, so the earlier we get going, the better.
Okay, anything further on the budget, guys?
Just one last question, getting back to Council Grant's query about the $100,000 for the Marina car park. It's in a bad state, I guess I never really looked at it very closely.
You should sit in this chair.
Easily. I don't know if our engineer wants to comment.
Yeah, it's, yeah, we're down there feeling thoughtful, so if you have a better look at it, sometimes when you're not looking for something, you don't notice it, but if you go and have a close look at it, you'll see there's some drainage that we like to do, there's just water sitting there causing the pavement to deteriorate more and more. So it's, to go in to do the small patch job, we're going to stop, we just have to redo the whole thing, right? So that's kind of where we're at now, if there's a change that is happening.
Director Finances?
That project also includes improvements to the edge of the park and a walkway that links from the Marina all the way up to Comox Avenue through this site here and is subject to federal granting, right? This was a grant application that we submitted last year with your approval.
We already have that, because I guess my other thought...
With all the federal grant?
Well, we've applied for it.
Whether anything would come out of looking at waterfront improvements, you know, the other project, whether that might have some impact on the, on the car park? They are seen as two totally separate projects that won't have any ramifications on each other.
Yeah, I think the improvements we're talking about for the Marina, for sure, if you will, is to extend further boardwalk treatment on the other side, closer to the grits, and not so much this way. Well, it'll be mutually beneficial if there's more walkways and better parking service.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd just like to recognize staff for the hard work that they've done from last meeting to this meeting, to come back. I thought we were going to be at this middle of May. And, you know, to come back with something, you know, that's palatable to this council in such a short time, a job well done, and thank you all.
Very well played. Yes, man.
But one more conversation on, I think we've talked about long-term debt and as it expires, some of it we're going to continue to put in reserves, and I'm just, like, this coming year, we have the rec center debt expiring?
The old, old one.
The oldest rec center.
The old, the old.
The oldest debt, yeah.
Yeah. So the thought is just to let it go, or keep that amount or reserve?
I'd rather spend it on infrastructure. I've got to be honest, reserves are nice, but, you know, the interest we're earning is nothing. I'd rather see us putting, getting, getting infrastructure in the ground where we know we've got infrastructure that needs upgrading. So if you look at capital expenditures, if you turn to page 36, the second page of the summary, so kind of halfway down those rows, you'll see total general fund, capital expenditures. So in 2013, we're proposing 5.3 million, it jumps to 8 million in '14, down to 3 in '15, 3 in '16, 1.9 in '17. If I had my brothers, I'd rather see us bumping those expenditures. I'd rather see more infrastructure going to the ground. And certainly, our policy that as infrastructure, as debt matures, will convert it to infrastructure. Quite clearly, we've done that in, you know, '13, '14, '15, maybe '16, but I'm not sure that '17 reflects that. But Richard mentioned that at the beginning in his moments, we're, we're looking at year five, right? So there'll be four years to earn surpluses and shift capital needs around. And so by the time we get to 2017, we'll probably be spending more, and that seems to be our pattern.
Yeah, the fifth year of the plan's always hard to flesh out because it's a thorough ways off in the future, and there could be all sorts of things happening by then.
The key to me is that in the immediate years, this year, next year, the year after, we've got substantial amounts of capital expenditures, so...
Yes.
I think what council's direction was is that when, when debt expires, that we don't use that, you know, that money that we were paying to reduce taxes, that we were going to shift that into infrastructure. I think that's where you...
Yeah, we're also guided by our long-range transportation plan, which is a series of works and improvements that need to be made over the next 20 years. It's all going towards a wide eye. All right, anything further? All right, so we have huge areas to move, and there's nothing much further, so we're trying to be able to move. Paper?